No, it's okay.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you all for joining, especially the residents. I greatly appreciate you guys joining us tonight. It's a super important moment for you to show up and that we really appreciate it from the Harlem River Preservation Team. So, before we get started, just an announcement of what you see in front of you. So there's a call-in number associated with tonight's call for people who speak different languages. All of you use the Zoom link, but there's also additional call-in phone numbers. Some of you joined there. So what we'll do throughout this discussion is if you have questions, you can put them in the chat and then we'll also have a Q and A at the end. So we'll be able to address your questions then. I'm next slide.
Could we actually let the interpreters also introduce themselves?
Thank you very much. We also have interpreters on the line. Sorry, they speak Spanish, Mandarin and Haitian Creole. They can introduce themselves.
This is the Spanish interpreter. Bienvenido a esta reunión. Ofrecemos interpretación en español por teléfono para conseguirlo. Marque primero el número seis cuatro seis cinco cinco ocho ocho seis cinco seis. Luego ingrese el cinco dos dos cuatro nueve ocho cero dos dieciocho. Signo numeral, signo numeral. Repito, para acceder a la interpretación en español por teléfono, marque primero el seis cuatro seis cinco cinco ocho ocho seis cincuenta y seis. Luego ingrese el cinco veintidós cuatro nueve ocho cero dos dieciocho. Signo numeral, signo numeral. Gracias, thank you.
Good evening, this is Mandarin interpreter. The following announcement is in Chinese. Thank you, I'm done.
Okay, and we only had Spanish and Mandarin requested for tonight, so.
Thank you very much for that. And just a quick reminder, sorry, please use the Q and A function for any chatting, any questions, so we can make sure we capture all of your questions as we move forward. Thank you. Okay, next slide. Oh, so, you know, as you know, we hosted this meeting. We had a town hall meeting a week ago, right? And hopefully all of you were there as well. But what we wanted to do specifically for the 2850 residents tonight was to zone in a little closer to you and get your feedback, right? We understand that there are some issues and concerns and we want to hear directly from you. We also want to give you information, right? So the copy of this presentation, you may have seen me, you may have remembered me, myself and Jerome Dunbar, who's also a part of the resident engagement team of the Harlem River Preservation Team. We dropped off these presentations to you personally. I met some of you. And we'll also publish the video recording of this town hall meeting to Harlem River Preservation's website, www.harlemriver... Sorry, www.harlemriver.org. Everyone will be muted during the presentation and we'll have a Q and A session at the end, as I mentioned. So to type your question in the Zoom Q and A on your mobile device, type the screen of your Zoom meeting and the toolbar will appear. Select Participants and then raise your hand. The Raise Hand function will allow us to let us know that you want to ask a question. And on your computer, move your mouse on the Zoom meeting screen to reveal the toolbar. Click Participants and then Raise Hand function. The meeting host will call on you during the Q and A. Next slide. So, as many of you know, right? The topic for our discussion today, the primary concerns that we'll go over today are safety and concern at Harlem River Tower. And we'll talk about the security, doors, cameras, lighting, the security team, who's also joined us on the call here today. The safety planning, any safety planning coordination that we've been working on. As well, we'll also talk about the Harlem River Tower gas issue. And we'll talk about hot plates, food distribution and survey, things that we've done to try to help and understand what you're going through. The, we'll also just give a recap and a reminder of the Resident Association Board election, the next two meeting dates that are coming up. And then we'll have a Q and A at the end. And then we'll give light reminders from some of the things you heard at the last week's town hall relating to construction overview, what has happened, what will happen, leases, rent, how to pay your rent, social services, just a reminder for the work that they do and the employment opportunities that we have available. So in terms of the safety and security at Harlem River Tower, you know, so obviously over the last several weeks, there have been recent gun violence that played out near Harlem River. And we wanted to address your safety and security at the building. You know, and in general, we want to make sure that you guys are safe. So in terms of the doors, an assessment of the lobby door has taken place. You may have seen staff at the door. Property management is working with this, this is the entry doorway to the front of your building. Property management is working with the security team and a third-party vendor to replace the magnetized locking mechanism. Your building, including all doors, all doors will also still undergo construction renovation. We'll also go over the cameras, any plans for camera work. We are assessing the high-traffic areas and blind spots around the Harlem River campus for camera placement. And again, your building and the campus will also have 24-hour surveillance upon the construction completion. Lighting, right? We'll also evaluate the lighting around the campus to improve visibility. Long-term lighting upgrades are also part of the construction renovation as well. And then, you know, to recap, the safety planning coordination, the security team will talk with you about some of the things that we've been working on. The Harlem River Preservation Developers, TA Leadership, Property Management and the Security Team will be meeting with local precinct and Police Service Area Six to discuss safety and security for Harlem River. So Property Management can give an overview on the door work. Will allow Priscilla, I think it is?
Hi, good evening. The front lobby door at 2850 Frederick Douglass Boulevard, the work has been completed by a third-party vendor. So the door has been checked. It's the locking mechanism is working and we've double-checked with keys. We are now at a place where if there are residents that are experiencing their own personal front door keys that are having issues opening the door, whether it be an older copy that could have not been such a great copy, please contact our management office so that you can be supplied with a proper copy. We have been furnished with good copies that have been double-checked by our vendor and staff. We will also be distributing notices to the entire building, all residents, to advise of safety.
Thank you, Priscilla. Well, construction possibly could give updates on the camera and lighting work?
Yeah, sure. So as part of the overall campus renovation, we are going to be adding camera systems to the stairwells as well as exterior cameras around the tower as well as buildings one through seven, the campus. And similar to lighting, we are adding new lights on the exteriors of the buildings to better light the exterior areas. And we're also replacing all the interior lighting in the stairwells and in the common area hallways. Again, to provide better lighting and we're hoping to be able to do that interior lighting work sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Ben. And now we are here a little bit from the Safety and Planning Team. The Safety Team, sorry, Mesa or Adam?
Oh, you mean from the Security, sorry. Hello, everybody, Adam Kroom from CNC Department Management. So they touched a little bit on the plan, what we have. So we have a very intense camera plan that's going to go up. Like anything else, it takes time because it's difficult to find the connections to, in order to connect the property the right way. You know, you gotta figure out a way how to bring across city streets and home run everything back. So the lighting plan is also part of the security plan. We already met with the CEO of the PSA Six. Everybody on the security team, like myself and Mesa, we're both retired NYPD officers. So we have a great rapport with them. Actually, the CEO of the precinct used to work for me when I was a sergeant and back in trends. So we have a rapport. So right now, we're just tackling, right now, we're just going after the normal things. You know, we've been at the property for a while. We already identified some apartments that have taken over by some of the locals. And we've been in the process of taking those apartments back, getting and removing some of the squatters. Like they said, the doors, currently your doors, like Priscilla said, they're all fixed, but the future plan is we would have key fobs on the door. It's the only people that's listed on the family composition. It's going to be issued a key fob. That's supposed to be anyone 13 and above. So, uh, that's about it. The main thing I want to bring out to everybody is that we need you guys' help. You know, we're here, we'll be on site, but we need your help when you see people doing the wrong thing. You see people choking the doors. Got to tell you, people don't allow people coming in the building behind you that you don't know, that you don't recognize, don't let them in, don't let them piggyback, things like that. There is a number. You guys all have that number, the maintenance number. That's 24 hours you can call to report maintenance issues. You can call that number and everything will be anonymous. And, you know, we hold that strict confidentiality and we'll take care of it there. Also, we have a violation letter process that we will be holding the head of households responsible for any regular lease violations, things like that. I know, I know, from some observations that we see, we see some, not the resident, but some of the resident children or guests, that you will be held responsible for your guests. So we have a strict policy with that. And hopefully working with you guys and we'll work together along with the precinct and we can combat some of the issues and make everything a better place. That's it. I can't hear you guys. You're muted, Christina, you're muted.
Hi, sorry. The number that Adam speaks of is there on the screen, but also it's six four six four six one three zero zero seven. And the options for security are option five. And you also have my direct contact and I can email it over or I'll put it in the chat for you all. If you have any concerns or anything you need to directly reach out to us about. But Property Management, Property Management, Maintenance, Leasing, Temporary Moves, all of that is at this phone number. So we encourage you to use the phone number. Can you go back? Oh, I'm sorry. So, so now I'm moving, I'm sorry. You can go forward. So now moving forward to discuss the gas issue at 2850. As you know, Harlem River Preservation Team inherited a gas issue when construction closing took place in February, mid-February. And that issue carried over before the construction closed in, but we inherited it when construction started. As a result, as you may have read in the newsletter, the work is pending, drawings is ongoing, right? So I'll let construction talk about the remedies, working to get the gas risers and everything working again. And then we'll get into the other things that we've done to try to help. Ben?
Sure. Yeah, so as Christina mentioned, we kind of inherited this problem. What is good news is that the drawings were approved last week. So that's a big milestone. And then the next step is our contractor right now, our plumbing contractor is pulling his permits in order to start the work. We are hoping to start the work in the next, in the next few weeks, pending being able to get this permit. Once we start the work, we're expecting about four months until all the gas risers have been replaced and fire stopped and tested. From there, in order to turn the gas back on into the units, we need DOB and Con Edison to come and inspect basically every single apartment. They need to look at all the gas riser work that we have done for the entire building. So that is a little bit out of our hands, but we are going to, you know, try and schedule it and coordinate it as best as we can. And I just, I just want to add that, that the tenants helping us get into the apartments and do our work and working with CNC to schedule our work in the apartments will go a long way in us getting the work done as soon as we can and hopefully getting gas turned back on again as soon as we possibly can. So, yeah, please work with us. I know it's a huge inconvenience, but we are, we're doing our best to get it back on as soon as we can.
Thank you very much, Ben. So some of the things that we've tried to do to help make life a little bit easier. The NITIA had distributed hot plates to residents at 2850. And we are planning to distribute additional hot plates. The hot plates, coordinating, getting the hot plates to you all is being done through Property Management. There are a couple of key dates coming up next week where Property Management can speak more to it, but essentially, unless I miss something, Priscilla, essentially those dates will be distributing the hot plates and the contact information and how to get access to them is, again, the same number, right? Six four six four six one three zero zero seven. But Priscilla, if I missed something, go ahead and fill in if I've missed anything.
So the distribution dates are tomorrow, Monday and Tuesday. Notices have already been sent out throughout the, throughout the building. They went to each door and were posted in the lobby of 2850. So there are timeframes, two-hour block timeframes. We try to spread them out, whether morning, afternoon. And on Tuesday, there's a timeline of a little bit later into the evening to accommodate everyone's schedule. Please note that if there is a timeline that is listed that does not accommodate your schedule, please contact the management office. That does not mean that you have to go without picking up a hot plate at the management office. That just means you contact our management office, the management team directly by contacting us at six four six four six one three zero zero seven, option one. And our team will coordinate directly with you. But the timelines have been listed in the notices that have been distributed. They start tomorrow, June 3rd, from nine to 11:00. Monday, June 6th, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And Tuesday, June 7th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Priscilla, very much. Additionally, what we've done, oh, and by the way, with the hot plates, there is for, a four-hot plate limit for safety reasons. So they'll, they'll ask you when you pick up or you'll be able to communicate that. But just wanted to mention that as well. So the other thing that we've done to try to help during this time is food distributions, right? So West Harlem Group has provided dry goods on a bi-weekly basis to the building. The last food drop was last week and another one will be next week. It's every Thursday. And if you're interested or you want to participate, let's say you, you, you work at the time and you can't get access, feel free to reach out to Property Management and they'll pass the information along to West Harlem Group, where we'll make sure you get a drop. Additionally, through collaboration with the Tenants Association and the current, you know, board, we have been able to get access to the additional food, the fruits and vegetables that the TA Association gets through City Harvest. So they have their normal food drop for the entire campus. And they've also offered the additional food to be given to 2850, you know, directly, right? So their food drop resumes in July. And some of you, again, may have seen me. I, we, myself and Jerome, we dropped off some of the fruits and vegetables. It was grapes, lettuce, potatoes, et cetera. So, yeah, I mean, you know, it isn't perfect. We're trying to do what we can to get you through this time. And everything that has been said, I can't say it any better than that, but we are here for you. Additionally, we are interested in, this meeting gives us your feedback, right? Additionally, we may conduct a survey, just asking you about the hot plates and do you feel safe, these kinds of things? So look out for that as well. And you'll continue to receive updates directly through the newsletter. Hopefully, all of you see the monthly newsletter that we've distributed. Most of the updates will be construction-related, but it covers all of the different services that we offer throughout. Next slide. So there was a general meeting last night about the Resident Association election. So NITIA is planning the election for Harlem River. We had the meeting last night. I was present, but, you know. So the next meeting, it's a nomination meeting, so it'll be Thursday, June 30th, and that's going to be at 6:00 p.m. And the next one, the election date, is Monday, August 1st. NITIA is going to distribute the flyers next week for reminders for the nomination meeting. And requirements for seeking office, if you're interested in running, you have to be a designated household member of any age. And any other members of the household who are 18 years or older whose name appears on the lease and who are in good standing. Again, NITIA is going to flyer reminders for this meeting coming up, but hopefully you guys will all participate. And after June 30th, the next one is August 1st. And the location will be at the Resident Association Community Room. Or the meeting was at the Resident Association Community Room. It may, the next meeting may be there as well, but if anything changes, you'll certainly be notified. Next slide. So just want to recap some of the light reminders that you heard at the May 26th Town Hall meeting. There's a construction recap where construction team went over some of the things that you all are going to experience. Obvious, with the renovations, you'll get, in terms of kitchen, you'll get new paint, flooring, LED lighting, outlets, cabinet, countertops, stainless steel, Energy Star appliances, including refrigerator, oven, gas stove, range hood. All kitchens will have a new double sink and cabinet space will not be reduced. A bathroom, you'll get new toilets, sink, vanity, medicine cabinet, bathtub, tile floor, outlet lighting. And in your bedrooms and living rooms, you'll get new paint, outlets, flooring, light fixtures, windows and blinds. And throughout, in terms of other upgrades, it'll be upgraded heating system, removable wall led paint, new doors, doorbells, intercom system, repairs to leaks, plumbing, electrical. And some of this work has started in terms of lead abatement. So some of the construction, and Ben, if I miss anything during this time, certainly stop me and, and you can take over in that respect. Most of this was said on last week, Thursday. What construction work has been done over the last few months? Again, removed lead paint and completed renovations in the vacant apartments across the Harlem River Campus. In early May, 10 units, and you may hopefully know this, 10 households were moved to temporary accommodations within the campus so their apartments can be renovated and their households will be moved back to their original apartments. And that's coming up very soon. And additionally, there'll be improved developments. The water infrastructure will be improved by replacing the riser valves in the basement. Over the last few months, you know, you've seen, and this will be continued, beginning to do work on replacing the roof, upgrade to plumbing, the structures, the... You have these figures that are fixed around your campus, mother and child, for example, statues. They're being renovated. There's protective boxes around them. And so they haven't gone anywhere. They're, they're coming back and they're coming back new and improved. And you've seen staging and storage in the different areas around the campus so that construction can do their work and including scaffolding and any fencing. This is all for your safety. Ben, did I miss anything?
No, I think you nailed it, yeah.
And so for the temporary moves, you'll get a 30-day notice when it's your time to move. But Property Management and the organization SAV is in close communication with residents on this item. And any questions, if you want to see the temporary unit, et cetera, you can reach out and make an appointment with the phone number that you heard through the phone number to six four six four six one three zero zero seven. And it's option three, I believe, for temporary moves. So feel free to stop by and take a look at it if you haven't seen it. It's really amazing stuff. So we're going to the lease signing reminder. So anyone who has not signed their lease, this is just a light reminder to give the lease paperwork into Property Management. Priscilla, if you have anything you want to offer there, just to continue to offer how important that is, feel free.
Hi, we have our compliance team, our compliance manager and specialists Rosa and Jamila onsite. So if anyone has questions and wants to make a specific appointment to accommodate or whether it be in the office or at their residence, please contact our office to speak with our compliance team by using the six four six number with the option for, for our leasing team. And our compliance leasing team will be able to assist you directly with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so in terms of how to pay your rent, this is again, just a reminder, you heard this last week. There are three ways to pay your rent. You can send a check or money order to Harlem River Preservation is P O Box 25098 Tampa, Florida 33622. You could drop your rent off in the Property Management Office at 231 West 151st. Or you can pay your rent online by visiting the ClickPay website that you may be familiar with already. It's www-clickpay.com backslash CC. And for any questions regarding your rent bill, the famous number, please call six four six four six one three zero zero seven, option two, or email harlemriver@ccmanagers.com. So there's also a social services team. Hopefully, some of you have met this, these group of people, really amazing. PSS is a social service provider for Harlem River and 2850, right? PSS is a multi-service nonprofit organization that's been supporting communities across New York City for 60 years. Hopefully, you were able to experience them in person. They had a meet and greet for all of the Harlem River residents. I attended, it was also really fantastic. And I think some of them may be on this call. But they offer a number of services, consultation and case assistance, support group facilitation and coordination, digital tech training and support various small group activities and workshops, health and fitness. PSS Life University, which is another thing they offer for education and training. And, and actually, I wanted to mention a small note about 2850 in terms of the construction. I missed it, just a reminder. You, as you know, your elevators are going to be modernized. It's going to be starting with car number one. The work will last approximately three months per elevator car. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys were reminded about that because it directly affects your building too. So there, we also, in terms of employment, Bravo to anyone who has participated or pursued any employment opportunities. It's a really great opportunity. It's a really great opportunity. Residents can apply for a job for the Harlem River Project. The resources available, you can contact REES, Rees, 718-289-8100, or PSS, 646-461-3007. Option four, for help updating your resume. And you could drop your resume off at the management office at 231 West 141st, or you can email at harlemriver@ccmanagers.com. And if you've reached out to me or mentioned that you sent your resume information, the information was passed along to the property management office and they'll reach back if they haven't yet. And there's an employment specialist that manages the employment for, so it was passed on to that person. And I think, I also want to mention that you all have a temporary move guide. Have you have access to that? You should have that in your possession. I would recommend reviewing it. It has a lot of helpful information on how to manage your temporary move coming up. And you can also reach SAV is 646-461-3007. Option four, if you have any questions for them directly. And yeah, and next slide. So we're coming to the end of this speaking portion of the presentation. You can visit our website for announcements and updates at www.harlemriver.org. And you can ask questions by emailing harlemriver@ccmanagers.com, visiting the property management office 231 West 141st Street, or calling the famous 646-461-3007 number. And the options, press one for maintenance requests, press two for leasing, rent payments and billing, press three for temporary moves, press four for social services, press five for security, and press zero for any other requests. And that was option three for temporary moves, not four. Sorry about that. The next slide. So I think we're about to open up for Q and A. So the instructions for type, you know, I don't know if you've been asking your questions. I see maybe one here. Raise your hand in Zoom if you have any questions and the meeting host, you know, I'll call on you and we'll move through it that way. I want to take a minute and ask if anyone had, before we get into the main room, if any of the translators have any questions from those, from the people that are on those lines.
We don't have any questions on the Mandarin or the Spanish line at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from any residents? Someone asked, when did we receive temporary move guides? So property management can zone in a little bit more on them, but they were distributed a couple of weeks ago. I think updated versions will go out again. But yeah, well, and if you want a copy, you can certainly reach out to property management 646-461-3007 to get your copy. And you can also email and request and we'll have one sent over to you electronically as well. I hope that answered your question. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Well, for the residents who joined, thank you for your time today. And all of the staff and translators, all of the team that joined this call and took the time tonight, everyone, residents and staff, thank you all for joining. Really appreciate. If you have any questions.
Christina, there's a few questions that are just coming in.
Oh, certainly, certainly, certainly.
Go through them, sorry. The first question that came through is from Eileen Lopez from PSS.
That was a mistake.
Okay. Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to break your flow, Christina. The second question is from Sharon Whaley. Your microphone should be able to unmute.
Hello?
Hi.
Good evening. I just wanted to say, you know, you give this stuff that is going to be done, but we have no dates. We have, we got the front door locked, but when are we going, we have to wait till Harlem River One get done?
In terms of construction, well, so then maybe you can offer some insight there?
Sure. So we, we are going to be starting in the tower shortly. Like Christina mentioned, the elevators, the common area lighting in the stairwells and the corridors, the trash compactors, the doors on each floor of the trash compactors. All that work, we're looking to start up in the next, in the next few months. The masonry restoration work on the exterior of the building, we are looking to start that at the end of this month, actually. As far as.
Do you all know when people gonna have to move out to the temporary apartment?
Yeah, so as far as the moving of the actual apartments, it's, it's not currently scheduled. It's, I don't have an exact date of when we're going to be starting in the tower on the apartment.
Ms. Whaley, if I may, so certainly at least 30 days in advance, your, the residents in your building will, as with all throughout the campus, will get noticed for it for sure. And we'll provide all the support you need, packing, boxes, all of the supplies you need. You have every one of us at your disposal to help you through this process. I will say that for the residents who have lived at 2850 for a long time, this is really such an amazing opportunity. I hope you guys can stick with us through it and enjoy what's about to come. If you happen to see the temporary units, the model units, right? Rather, then you know that it's going to be really amazing. So I hope, you know, while, while you don't have a right this moment, you will be getting one and it's going to be really amazing stuff happening.
Only thing I'm saying is, what made them do that building back there first?
So Ben.
Yeah, so the, the sequence of work was really just based on overall site logistics. It depended on, you know, the current condition of buildings, where we were able to start first based on just site, overall site logistics, starting over on, on building three that we call it. Just, just worked out the best for our overall schedule.
So we looking at next year?
It, it's not going to be 2022 for the tower. That's, that's correct.
All right, good night.
Thank you for your questions, ma'am. Does anyone else have questions?
I saw a question from Renee Carter. I'm going to see if you can unmute your line.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. My question is, the garbage bins that's in front of the building is constantly infested with rats as big as cats. When will that problem be resolved? Because the rats are running around everywhere. And especially coming in and out of those containers that's in front of the building. I've just never seen garbage in front of a, you know, garbage bins in front of a building like that where these rats are just, they're very huge. And they're in and out the garbage, they run up the ramp, up the ramp towards, towards the building, even in the lobby. How can that get resolved?
Hi, Ms. Carter. This is Priscilla. So we, the garbage at this moment, sorry, the garbage at this moment, the cans are posted, are still in front of the building due to the fact that there are still some compactor chutes that we inherited as inoperable and shut from prior to conversion. We're still working with our in-house staff and our third-party contractors to get every compactor chute operable. Once that is done, then we can remove the cans that are in front. In the meantime, we do have our exterminators, we have pressed on to our exterminators, the importance and the urgency of proper extermination for the infestation and within the buildings for any, any rat burrows and things of that nature. So it has been highlighted and we are working weekly with the exterminators along with third-party vendors for the chutes.
Okay, so that means that this will continue?
Not, not for the long, not for the long haul, short term.
Also, I would like to add, add to question. I see that the lock is on the door, which is great. However, there's still young people, even today, when I went to the store, that's all in the lobby, smoking reefers and hanging out there. So I don't see any police presence to check the building? And will there be cameras installed to ensure our safety?
Yes, there will be cameras installed. We don't have it, we're working on the timeline for the cameras to get installed. That's the first thing about the cameras. If you get the cameras in, then that should help elude and then stops the process of the young people. But if you see people hanging in lobby, then you have, they have to be doing something. If they're smoking, then definitely call 311 to have them come. The problem is that they removed the trespass affidavit program. If you know about the trespass affidavit program, they removed it. So the police can't go into a building and lock people up or even ask people for ID if they're just standing in the lobby and they're not doing nothing. That goes for anywhere in the building. So we know this has been a tool that we've been using for a very long time that's been effective. But unfortunately, like everything else in the city, they got rid of these tools that, that helped protect the residents, you know, inside our building. So they got rid of the laundering, they don't enforce the gambling no more. So, you know, we, you know, we're working on that hard, we're speaking with the, you know, local politicians and local elected officials to try to get these particular things overturned because it is a problem. So, you know, we're addressing it, it's a little time until we get a handle on it. But you know, we already have, like, we said earlier, we already have cameras that are going to be coming. Is this a matter of getting them, building the infrastructure there? And once they're done, then we'll be able to move forward. But in the meantime, we still need your help and your eyes. Because, you know, if you see somebody that's there, so call that number. And if you know that person lives in the building, you can report it anonymously. And then we can take it out on the head of house. So that's what we plan to do. So when you see the young people there, some, mostly people living in the building, their friends and people that live in the building, we need people to speak up and say something.
Yeah, the problem is, these young people don't live in this building. So they come here and use it as a hangout, they smoke reefers and they drink liquor and play the loud jukebox that they have. And then they release themselves in the elevators and the staircases. And mind you, maintenance has been doing a wonderful job with cleaning up the area, but it's only so much maintenance can do. They'll come in and clean up everything. And then they'll come right back in, smoke reefers, drink liquor. And then they have to release theyself and they do it in the elevators and staircases and they don't live in the building.
I totally understand that. But like I mentioned before, my guests, some of the people that do live in the building, some of my friends, they got their friends there. That identify the friends, you know, that's because Johnny doesn't live in the building, doesn't mean that Billy can't be held responsible. Everyone's gonna be responsible for their guests and their visitors, passive buyers, whatever it is, they'll be held responsible. So like I said, there's a few, we need everybody's eyes and ears that live in the building to make those calls and give those people up and let them, let us know who they are. But not, like I said, all information is anonymous, but we need your eyes and ears too, you know, just because that person doesn't live there. But he's visiting someone and he's there with a resident. Right. They're accountable for that person. I don't care if it's one person or if it's 20 people. They're 100% going to be held accountable for that. And that's.
Also, also, if I can add, you know, we do have our tour commanders on the property and they are very familiar with a lot of the tenants, many of the tenants know them, have become familiar with the tour commanders. You can speak to them if you don't want to call in or come to the management office. They'll take whatever information and pass it on to us. And we can send out these, you know, these letters to the residents if, you know, if in fact there are some of their children hanging out or their guests on the, on the premises. And, you know, we can start with violation letters to hopefully, you know, get this down to a minimum.
Okay, good. And also some tenants in this building take the garbage and they put it in the hallway or they throw it down the staircases.
That is also something that if you know that this is going on, you can also notify us. We will send out violation letters as well. We are also going to put clear signs up stating what should and should not be put down the chutes. We are aware of it. We were made aware of it yesterday and we're working on putting up signs, you know, just so that, you know, everyone's aware of it and then we can start putting out and sending out those violations as well.
Okay, so if I do see this, just call 311?
Well, the garbage part, you can let us know.
No, the reefers smoking in the lobby.
Yeah, the reefers smoking in the lobby, you know, unfortunately, there's not much that we can do as far as that's concerned because, you know, like Adam Troom said, you know, they've taken out the trespassing laws and we're not allowed to go in. But, you know, still, it, it, it does go to the precinct and the precinct does send someone out and it is, it is told, you know, to the community leaders. And maybe that's the way, the route that we could take, you know, that everyone could help us by doing that.
Also, you can still call that 646 number and you can be anonymous, Ms.
Yes.
Who it is on that 646 number. That directly comes to us. Then that's how we can take it from there.
Okay, 646, I'm sorry, what's the rest?
Yeah, it's the number that's on the screen. I think it's on the screen.
It's on the screen?
646-461.
I'm sorry, 646?
Yep, 461.
461.
3007?
3007.
And the option five is for security.
Option five. Thank you.
Certainly, thank you. There was a question, Judy, there's a question there from April Joy Washington. Do you see that one there?
Yeah, will you read it, please, or do you want me to?
Sure, absolutely. Will the EMTs have a key to the front door? It is a safety concern that I have given the door, that given the door is locked and we do not have a working intercom system. Some years ago, I needed assistance and my disabled aunt had to go downstairs just to let them in.
Well, as far as EMT is concerned, if someone's calling EMT, more than likely, there's someone who can get downstairs and take care of that. Because, you know, EMT comes from different parts of the city. There's not one particular EMT person that would be able to have a key.
Thank you, Ms. Washington, for your question. I hope that helped in some way. But thank you again for participating. Judy, do we have any other?
I don't see any other questions here. I didn't know if, Priscilla, if you wanted to say anything about the EMT question either.
Sorry, I'm clicking 10 times before I can unmute. Apologies for the delay, everyone. So as, as far as EMT goes, keep in mind that with the upgrades of the, the front, the front door systems and the intercom systems and things of that nature that will, that will be added. These are systems that you will be able to unlock for visitors and things of that nature yourself. So let's say in, in terms of an emergency and things of that nature, you will be able to allow for, for, let's say if it is EMT, EMT to, will be able to ring and gain access to the, to the unit. But it, but it is something that we can further discuss in the background as a team to see if there's anything system related that we can use for, for emergency services. We can circle back at that. Not, not a problem.
Thanks very much for that, Priscilla.
I don't see any other questions in the Q and A or in the raised hands, but let's go back out to the language lines.
I have no questions on the language lines at this time.
Well, you know, I, I, I do want to say again, thank you. I've said it before, right? I really appreciate you guys taking the time to be with us tonight. We are, we continue to be here after this call and for the rest of the time. And property management will be here forever after that. And, you know, social services, et cetera. So if you see me also walking around, feel free to stop me and I'll be present to answer and be, be there for you as well. Ms. Whaley, I think, has another question. Ms. Whaley, I think, has another question. Her hand went up back up, or is that a different, was that the same one?
Hello?
Oh, hi.
Hi, I have a question. Because when we was doing the veto on the different parts of the election, they said that we wouldn't be able to get the tenants a ballot. And I asked why they can't vote if they live here. And she said, you got to come downstairs. So I don't know what that's about.
You'll be able to participate, I'm sorry. Sorry, during that, that meeting, it was mentioned that you'd be able to participate by phone. And there's a system, right, by which you'll be able to participate. I, I think that anyone who cannot get access, you know, we can reach out. And in fact, if you want to give us the names of people you think they're immobile, we can't do anything to help with the election, but we can certainly communicate if someone, if you feel like someone is shut in and can't actually get out. But NYCHA did have information on how the multiple ways in which persons can participate.
But remember, we're supposed to do the nomination committee and that never so quick.
No, that didn't, that wasn't last night. That was a general election meeting. The nomination meeting is going to be at the end of the month. And property, I don't know if you were at the beginning of the, the call. I mentioned that property management is going to flyer, thank you very much for that, going to flyer June 30th at 6:00 PM. They're going to flyer next week for that as a reminder notice for the, a meeting that's coming up June 30th. So.
You mean NYCHA is going to fire?
Yes, 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 that is what I think. Thank you. But yes, the property man, NYCHA will, will go door to door and throughout the campus to flyer for the nomination reminder meeting.
Who, who made the decision for NYCHA to do it?
So the Harlem River Preservation Team and all of the staff cannot take any part in the participation of the election in any way. So NYCHA, just as a body of, you know, an entity that has been involved with the property, it was helpful for them to help facilitate the general election notices, for example, and nomination, you know, these kinds of things. It's just because we cannot participate in your process. But we can help facilitate and encourage, you know, you all able to be able to do it yourselves. Did you have any other questions? Well, thank you, everyone, for taking the time tonight. I hope you all travel safely if you're not home, but otherwise, I hope you have an enjoyable evening. Thank you very much again. And Judy, thanks, everybody. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The translators as well, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Always a pleasure.